We will call the meeting to order if everybody can rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands, a nation under God, indivisible, perfect and just.
All right. Thank you, everyone who's here and for those who are watching online. We appreciate it. We will start first with special recognition. Dr. Pierce will share National Principals Month with us.
Okay, well, yes, it is October, which means it is National Principals Month. So this is the month where we celebrate our principles. And so I want to start with reading the Governor's Proclamation. Which states, whereas principals and assistant principals play significant roles in our education system by creating hope for every student in their buildings, leading culture, systems, and learning, and working tirelessly each day as visionaries, assessment experts, community builders, public relations experts, budget analysts, facility managers, special programs administrators, and guardians of various legal, contractual, and policy mandates and initiatives. And whereas principals and assistant principals work collaboratively with families, teachers, and district officials to develop mission statements, set performance goals and objectives for schools to achieve educational excellence, and maintain high curriculum standards and expectations for all students. And whereas the Association of Washington School Principals honors each exemplary principal and assistant principal who have succeeded in providing high-quality learning opportunities for students as well as their exemplary contributions to their profession. And whereas the Washington Senate, in coordination with the efforts of the National Association of Elementary School Principals, the National Association of Secondary School Principals, and the United States Congress, has designated October National Principals Month to honor and recognize the contribution of all school principals and assistant principals to the success of each student in Washington schools, our most valuable resource, and to encourage residents of Washington to promote awareness of the importance of school leadership and ensuring that every child has access to a high-quality education. Now therefore, I jaysly, Governor of the State of Washington, to hereby proclaim October 2024 as Principals Month in Washington, and I encourage all people in our state to join me in this special observance. So we like to take a moment at the board meeting to recognize our principals. And you know, they're not here. And our principals work very long hours and have many after-school events and opportunities. So as part of our thank you, we do not invite them to this meeting to be to be recognized. But we still want to recognize them. And I wanted to highlight just a couple of things. We do recognize an Administrator of the Year. This is a nominated award each year, and the Administrator of the Year is recognized as part of our Welcome Back Assembly every year. And that this year, Naomi Puckett was our Administrator of the Year. She's the principal at Ridgeview Elementary. And so it was really fun to honor Naomi and to award her as our Administrator of the Year for 2024. And then all throughout the month, you can look for some Facebook posts highlighting and honoring our principals. And so our first one spotlights our choice school principals. So this is Casey Benyon, who's the principal of Delta High School, Paul Randall, who's the director of Tri-Tech, Carrie DeForest, who's the principal at Mid Columbia Partnership, MCP, and Guy Mistratt, who is principal of Endeavor and Legacy and JJC and Phoenix. And so these are our choice school principals. We highlight them. And like I said, every week, we'll be spotlighting other principals on our Facebook. And so we just appreciate them and all the work that they do. So if you want to just join me, if you're here, and a round of applause for our principals who are not visiting here. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pierce. Next up, communications from parents, staff, and district residents. The Kenwick School District Board of Directors appreciates hearing from the community at regular board business meetings. The Board of Directors provides an opportunity for communication from parents, staff, and district residents. This time is reserved during the working meeting for the Board to listen to comments, input, and information. The Board does not respond to comments provided as the goal is to listen and to learn. Please know the Board's silence is neutral. It is neither a signal of agreement nor disagreement with speakers' remarks. As appropriate, the Board will ask the superintendent and her staff to look into any issues raised. Finally, please remember that your words have impact, and you, not the school district, are responsible for your words. We caution all speakers that it's possible that your statements could violate the rights of others under various laws, including laws protecting privacy and laws prohibiting defamation. If you are unsure of your legal effects of your remarks, you should seek independent legal counsel. In any case, we ask that you help us model for our students what a respectful and inclusive community looks and sounds like. So when the board president calls your name, please come to the podium at the front of the room. You have two minutes to address the board. A stoplight on the screen will let you know when to begin, when you have one minute remaining, and when your time has ended. Thank you for taking the time to be here this evening. First up, we have Dottie Stevens.
Dottie Stevens, Kenwick President. I missed the last board meeting in your study, but I was able to read the newspaper a little bit, and I thought I'd comment. The Kenwick School District many years ago chose counselors as opposed to social workers. I, in fact, was a supervisor at K-12 counselors for 13 years. Different models of service. However, sometimes a social worker is needed. And of course, as an ex-principal at Legacy High School, boy, did I know that. A network like communities and schools can provide that service to keep students in school who need access to local assistance. And they have years of experience. And I was a person that supported them 2010 on and was glad to see when they were able to come and give us service. I had heard here that 10 of the 11 schools were very satisfied from you. My only question is, and I know you're still looking at it and working on it, what do you know that the schools do not? When schools really support something, you have to listen. And, you know, what is your agenda? I'm not sure. From what I read, I know, and I know there will be more information provided. Thank you.
Thank you, Dottie. All right. So next up is Linda Stevenson. And I also have a note on here. Mary Jo, you'll be ceding your time to Linda. So Linda, you have four minutes.
Just give me a sec. Not short. How do you do that? She made it look so easy. How do you get it to go back up? Yes. Thanks. All right. Thanks. Hi, I'm Linda Stevenson. I am here to speak about the board's decision to create a narrative about fatherless families in KSD. I have spoken to a number of people at the state level. Everyone that I have spoke to agrees that this is a very bad idea. Family structure is not a piece of data that is collected by OSPI. Should KSD try to collect and use this information, you will be wide open to litigation based on state and/or federal anti-discrimination laws. The structure of a KSD family is none of your business. It is the district's job to meet each student and family where they are. Based on my conversations with others, including legal counsel, there is a two-part issue here. First, there is a potential violation of student privacy under FERPA regulations. I'm sorry, are you busy? Okay.
I mean, I'm listening.
Okay, great. Depending on how the information is collected and used, the use of data about fatherlessness could violate FERPA. Second, identifying a subset of KSD students as fatherless will be stigmatizing and harmful. You want board discussions to be civil and to use clean language, right? So that any child could attend. To me, this discussion of fatherlessness is far worse than any bad words that might be used at a board meeting. You keep creating this narrative of fatherlessness, of normal families versus fatherless families, creating a category of otherness or less than. Finally, your use of data needs to be checked. And I say this kindly as a college statistics instructor. You said, and again, you're not paying attention, you said that the number one statistic of success and failure is fatherless families.
I'm writing your words down. I don't know what you want from me.
That is completely false. Cite your source. You mentioned several statistics. The numbers you quoted were from an article published in The Village Voice from 2002. The title of the article is "The Daddy Shady Show." The topic of the article was a person called Marshall Mathers III, also known as Eminem, the rap artist. The numbers you quoted were attributed to an organization described in the article as a not unbiased organization, and the numbers are more than 25 years old. We're talking back in the 1990s. And still, they are being quoted by non-credible websites, forums, blogs, a book by Ann Coulter, and yourself at a board meeting, as though they are factual. In my opinion, it is irresponsible for you guys to be sitting there spouting false or non-credible information just to support your personal beliefs. Stop this false narrative about fatherless families. It is condescending. It is misogynistic. And it is discriminatory against KSD students and families. And it is going to have a negative impact on them. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. All right. Next up is consent items. I will take a motion to approve the consent items. Thanks, Mike. Any discussion? All right, Patty, we will go for the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Weddill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, moving along. Communication, follow-up. I don't know if you have any follow-up?
Just real briefly. So communities and schools, after the last meeting, one of the outcomes, in addition to continuing with communities and schools, was for district to follow up and meet with them, to put together some sort of plan to produce quarterly reports with data that can be shared with with the board. So BJ Wilson, our Director of Student Services, and I are meeting with Lupe and her team this week to talk about the plan for that and also to talk about the plan for the $100,000 reduction that they offered, right, to provide to us for the next two years. So, you know, as we continue that partnership with them, one of the things we have been talking about as a district team is how can we use that money that they offered, right, to take off of the contract to help benefit students? We heard a number of students and staff talk about mental health needs. And as a board, the board really discussed, you know, that we, when we had to discontinue the provision of comprehensive health therapists in our schools, because of course, that was funded through ESAR funds, and those ESAR funds expired, that we had to discontinue that. Is there an opportunity for us to use the $200,000 over the next two years to provide, you know, a backfill for that? So I don't have any specific details yet to share with the board, except for there are, and we also heard people talk about a company that does telehealth. And we know some of our neighboring districts use some of their ESAR funds instead of providing in, you know, person people in the schools to provide telehealth. And so we've been looking at some of those opportunities. And there's a real promising one that allows you to purchase sessions as you go. So we're really digging into that potential. And hopefully, within the next week or two, I will have some concrete information to share about how we're proceeding with that. But it, you know, it's turning into, you know, a good opportunity for us to think about how we can expand services for kids who need it. So I wanted to loop back and share that information.
Great.
So not only, just to clarify, like, not only will we have communities and schools, we'll also have some opportunities for some mental health therapy for students who truly need that level of support.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Pierce. We will jump into superintendent, board reports, student, board representative reports. So we will start with Annie.
Hello. So unfortunately, we weren't able to have a superintendent advisory meeting today because PSA testing kind of got in the way of that. However, Diego, Dr. Pierce, and I met, and we discussed the upcoming WASSA conference and how that would look for Diego and I. And then we also discussed the upcoming Communities and Partners events, and how Diego and I might be able to take on a bigger role during that.
Nice. Can you just share a little bit about the Communities and Partners events?
Just how we would be greeting people. And then Dr. Pierce was wanting to do a little bit of an interview with Diego and I that people could watch, just asking questions about our schools and our opinions on things, certain things.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Dr. Pierce?
Yeah, just a few things. School visits, you know, we're starting those up again, as we all know. I've been out at Amund Creek, Amistad, Westgate, Canyon, Dion Vista over the past couple of weeks, and just great things happening in our schools. Wanted to share a couple of meetings and touch on what Annie shared as well. But there's a Mid Columbia, there's a planning committee that's for the Mid Columbia Children's Museum. And I don't know if board members have heard anything about that. But they are holding a series of stakeholder meetings. And so my fellow superintendent colleagues in Pasco and Richland and I attended one of their stakeholder meetings. And it's just really nice to, for them to be getting input from the local school districts about, you know, what sort of things, you know, might be beneficial to students. It was a great meeting, and appreciated them seeking our input. We also, the three of us, Shelley, Michelle, and I, were invited, we are every year, to share legislative priorities with the Tri-City Chamber Legislative Committee. And so that happened earlier this week. And I know where the board's going to be talking about legislative priorities later on in the meeting. What we really focused on in this meeting were the shared priorities for all K-12 districts across the state. So we focused on the Washington Association of School Administrators, or WASA, legislative priorities, which really align with the board's priorities as well. And we focused on immediate priorities for full funding of special education, transportation, and MSOC, material supplies and operating costs. And then we were each able to share a little bit of specific data, highlighting the impact of those things being underfunded to our specific school districts. And then the way WASA has framed the legislative platform is there's those three immediate priorities, and then some longer-term priorities that, you know, wanting to, like, be strategic and have some focus on what we're asking the legislature to try to accomplish this session, and then what we want to ensure remains on the legislature's radar. So things like reforming levy and local effort assistance, and the staff allocation model. So I, when we get into that part of the conversation later, I do have the document that we shared with the with the council. And it's essentially, like I said, the WASA legislative platform. So I just wanted to share that with you. And then a couple other just items of interest. The legislature approved funding for a math tutoring program. And I shared a little preliminary information with the board when we first heard about that. I want to thank Representative Banky for reaching out and making sure we had that information. And then we did get information from OSPI about it. It's called Math Nation. That's who was awarded the contract. And it's now available at no cost to all Washington State public schools and tribal schools, so across the state. I don't know how long the funding is going to be in place. But we have been working internally in the district to create the link to Math Nation on Rapid Identity. And we haven't been communicating out about it yet, but we're just on the verge. We've been communicating about it internally. And then we've got a flyer that will be going out to families, Parents Square, and that kind of thing about about it. So included in this partnership is free digital access to Math Nation resources for students in grades six through eight for math, Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II. It's got ACT and SAT prep, and 24/7 access to virtual math tutoring. So again, you know, we were able to provide some tutoring through Varsity Tutoring with our ESAR funds. And when those ESAR funds went away, that tutoring went away. So it's really nice that here's another tutoring opportunity that's being funded through the legislature. And it's for students, teachers, families. And so we're going to work on really getting the word out to families. And we're just on the cusp of doing that. So I wanted to make sure the board was aware of it.
So it's grades six through eight for algebra, and then?
Yeah. Okay. And I kind of said that weird. It's it's resources for six through eight math.
Okay, and then?
And then algebra.
Okay.
Geometry, Algebra II. So yeah.
Gotcha.
Yes. Yeah. I hope we can see. We should be able to get data. I'll follow up and see.
Because that'll allow us to know whether we're publicizing it well enough, because if very few people are accessing it, they're publicized.
Is there any limit on who can do that? Like, how many kids?
Well, it, no limit.
There's a, so it'll be like a, it'll be like a Zoom call essentially, right?
It is access to virtual math tutoring. So it's, there's, there's videos. It's really cool. We've seen it. It's videos. It's resources. But it is, it's like chat tutoring and that kind of thing. And if you want, if you want to elaborate.
It's chat-based. So it'll be text, but they'll pull a whiteboard up at times as well.
There's actually a person on the other side? No?
Well, I think there can be for that. There, it's, that goes to another one. It's really chat-based is that first one. It is available 24/7 on demand.
Okay.
Okay. So it's not a situation where someone needs to sign up for an account?
Nope. Nope.
Okay. So.
There is a login, though, through our Rapid Identity.
We can get data from Rapid Identity.
Yeah.
About how many are getting in. And when we spoke with them, they said they will send us reports as well.
Now, my, okay, sorry. This, I really care about this. Is it like, some of these chat things, you can just almost like give me the answer, or they get the answer. But this is not that. I assume, I assume they're challenging the kids still in a way that they're learning, but?
We haven't seen it yet. So I, that's a hard one to answer. It's really for homework support.
We did, we had a Zoom call. Alyssa and Tina, Tina and I had a Zoom call when we first learned about this with the Math Nation person who's assigned to Washington State. And they showed us some of the, some of the tools. I mean, I think it's, this went through a process statewide. So I think that there was a selection process to get a good product because they were awarded this statewide contract. And so I don't believe it's designed to just give kids the answers to things. It's like tutoring and resources and help.
Okay.
Yeah. What's the, what's the contract? Or how long do we have access to it?
You know, I double-checked on that. And I don't know. I suppose as long as the state legislature finds it.
Till the money arrives.
Yeah. I couldn't find anything that said it's until, like, it's only for this year, or it's until X. So we don't know. But, but we know it's for the 24, 25 school year. We don't know if it's beyond the 24, 25 school year.
Okay.
And then just two other real quick things. We have a, we always need substitutes. And so we have upcoming substitute job fair, October 29th, from four to six, for teachers, parent educators, nutrition services, bus drivers, secretaries, custodians. I just want to do a little PSA about our upcoming substitute fair. And I also want to end by thanking Annie and Diego. As Annie mentioned, we rescheduled the superintendent student advisory council meeting that would have been today because of PSAT testing in our schools. And we didn't want that to be a conflict. So we moved that out two weeks. And so we'll have our meeting. And Nutrition Services comes to our October meeting, and they serve lunch and get input from students. So we didn't want kids to miss that. And then we talked a little bit today about each, every year in November, we hold what we call a Community Partners Event, State of the District. We invite legislators. We invite key partners in the community, council members, board members, obviously. And we do a kind of a little State of the District update with them. And so I'm working with Annie and Diego to incorporate them into this year's program. That's all I have.
That's it. All right. Mike?
Nothing for me. Hopefully, I'll get some time to start visiting schools here pretty quick. Great. Dr. Miller?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to congratulate all of the juniors who took the, juniors and sophomores who took the PSAT today. Hopefully, they had a good experience and were prepared.
Thank you. Brittany?
Did a little bit of work since our last meeting on getting our WASD legislative priorities pulled together from everyone and submitted. So I submitted those yesterday. We have a line item about that on the agenda, so I won't elaborate here. But I'll talk about that in a little bit. But we did collectively decide what our priorities were. And from what Dr. Pierce has shared, it sounds like it's very much in line with what the superintendents across the state also see as priorities. And then I am also, like Mike, getting to a place where I have things in order in my personal life enough that I can start doing some school visits. So based on our meeting last week, we heard a lot from people at Legacy, at Amistad, and Wherza. So I've asked Dr. Pierce to prioritize those schools for me. So hopefully, here in the next coming weeks, I'll be making visits to those three schools to start off with, and then just start touring everything else. And then, so, sorry, I'm pointing at. So every, every Friday, we get a board update from Dr. Pierce. And it includes at the bottom this fantastic link that goes to this Excel spreadsheet. And I think it's the principals that go in and add the information about what's happening at their schools.
And Robyn and, yeah.
Okay. So that was a very useful tool last spring and winter and spring to see what's happening. And I've gone to it a couple of times, and it looks maybe a little sparse. So I don't know if that's just because there's not a lot going on in the schools right now, or maybe the principals aren't using it. I don't know.
I will follow up on that.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind looking into that, because I would love to be able to know what's going on and drop in on those activities. But I haven't seen a whole lot.
Okay, so.
And maybe I'm doing it wrong.
And just take this for what it is. Have you switched tabs on the box?
Yeah, I went over to the right.
All right. So I was gonna say, I was looking at one, too, and I was like, oh, this is not good. And then I realized there was another tabs. Okay.
Yeah.
You've done that, then you're a step ahead of me. Perfect. That's it?
Yeah.
Perfect. Mike?
I recommend Legacy Wednesday morning, early, right before school starts.
Is that Pancake?
I think that's Pancake Day.
Is it every Wednesday?
I think so.
It's Tyler, CIS. I know. Pancakes.
I believe it's every Wednesday. Yeah.
Great.
No, I don't.
So, yeah, outside of the legislative prep stuff, everybody's done, working with Dr. Pierce and Mr. Bill Jordan on getting our superintendent flyer updated and ready to get out there and be posted here the next couple of weeks. That's, that's all I have for tonight. So we will move on to reports and discussions. And the most exciting one of the year, capital fund budget and capital projects update. Vic Roberts, Dr. Brillhart, Ryan Jones. I think that's it. I think I got all.
Brillhart's, this is your maiden voyage right here.
This is it. All right. We're excited.
Don't, do not screw it up.
That's a great, that's a great mentor on these.
This is gonna be good.
Yeah, it is finally, it's very nice that you guys finally got me some help. So it's gonna make the next few years go a lot easier for me. I actually only got about a month and a half now, but.
We know what you meant.
We know.
So just some accountability here and informational, type of information on capital projects. And this will be going over here today with Dr. Brillhart and Ryan jumping in. Some of the money situation. So you can see the projections over here, but this is, we're, we're just about closed up. So we're August 31st, our year end. And I've spent a lot of time September and October closing the books. So we're almost done and this should be pretty close. But you can see investment earnings, some good numbers there. Estate match, we're not going to have a lot of match left. 24, 25, we've drawn almost all that down for Ridgeview. So maybe a little bit there, 400,000 for 24, 25. We do get some E rates sometimes when we do I T related, you know, system type of hardware type upgrades. So we got about 400,000 there this year and we'd probably get maybe another 500,000 next year, hopefully. We kind of go through and figure out what can be reimbursed through the government program. Technology levy, 4.3 million came in on the taxes and then we spent 3.9 down here. So normally we just budget an offset. Here's next year, this year, 4.6, 4.6. Up to 3.9 down here, 2 million was for 4,500 iPads. And about 7, 800,000 was for classroom instruction type stuff, projector, document camera, laptops, things like that. And then about 850,000 was more type I T type infrastructure, cabling upgrades, system. And then some more revenues and tritech, a little bit of reimbursement there. And then dipping down here, the site work, we mentioned Riada, how we had to pay for our share of infrastructure. So we did make that payment. That was 1.5 million. And then half the budget, probably a couple of million dollars placeholder for the next few years as we have some other projects, infrastructure that's going to be coming up, ridge line and some other ones. They'll touch on that later on in this presentation. And then Ridgeview, you can see 6.9 million, not a lot of cost left on that. And one, one million here on asset preservation. So 780,000 of that was the paving. We did this summer. About 130,000 was related to some phone system kind of upgrades. And I think Highlands Track had some retainage, about 70, 80,000 in that project. We touched on I T and tritech's just getting into their, their major project down here, a million dollars we spent, mostly architect type fees and expect about 10.5 million 24, 25. And for, for preliminary budget, 25, 24, 25. So we always kind of put a placeholder in there of $5 million. And that's where, you know, if things come up, other projects want to get knocked out, that gives enough capacity to do that. The 1.5 is really for, you know, some of the other type of projects, flooring or we have a roof project for next year, some more paving and things like that. So pretty healthy here. We, we did have a, tritech has been using some, some funds out of here and they really should be using their own money. They've had some money in the general fund and transferred a million dollars out of the general fund, that's tritech money to the capital fund. So that still leaves, if you take off the tritech and the tech levy, about 32 million dollars at the end of the year, which is more of the, you know, leftover money from bonds and matches and things like that. So looking out, it's looking pretty good. We've talked before about the bond had a, a new school in it. We don't need a new school. And we've said, you know, that's, you know, 25 million or so that can be applied toward the next bond, but that still does leave a lot of flexibility for, for the board to figure things out. And Dr. Brillhart.
Vic, does this, does a state match come in at the end of the year or does that come in regularly throughout the year? So like that 10, five, that's something like you might get a million in September and then some more later. How's, how's that?
So with Ridgeview, you have to spend all your share first. So if the project's 30 million and, you know, we might have to spend 15 million first before we can start drawing down our match. And once we get to that point where we spend our money, then it comes in pretty fast if we get the, the billings in. With tritech down here, it's a little bit different. It's a grant. So pretty much once we, we've been getting the money back on that, we've got about 600,000 this year. So once we pay it, we can turn it right around and send it back and they'll pay us, which is, which is really a, a better deal than the state match.
Thanks.
So then some of the projects, this is what your 780,000 buys. So you see Ferreras, this was all torn up. It was grass. It was grass that really wouldn't grow. The kids are out here playing a lot and they're scheduled to put some four square, different paint type things on there. I don't think that's quite done yet. They're working on that. South Ridge, a couple of things. This is a seal coat overlay in the front of the school. This is the side. This was a, that was just a seal coat and crack fill here. This was a overlay. That's a big parking lot. Guys know where that is. Kamaiakin, the bus loop was torn up and that was all redone. This is a seal coats, backfill over here on this parking lot. And then Highlands, this was torn up. This was in pretty bad shape between the portables and put some paving in there. So we thought we got pretty good prices on that and got knocked out quite a bit. Some of the other projects, the East Gate, that's been going on a year. We had to stop over the winter and stuff, but it's finished this summer. This is all ported place, put in a couple, couple of new structures, but you know, that cost about 180,000 dollars. And then Washington, so the fence is up. See that there? And then according, if you don't know what a gaga pit is, that's kind of slipped in the picture there. Everybody wants those. And there were probably, can I say 20 trees around here that got taken down? And then three big trees, four trees here between the portables, which were a danger. And I think that cost a total of 30,000 dollars to get rid of the trees. CID did reimburse us 6,500 dollars for some trees that we haggled over that they wanted us to take down. We said they were theirs. So tree removal is a big thing. So Washington, a little bit of accomplishment there. So some of the projects we're, we're working on are the, you know, we touched on being finished and, and some of these were taken out of the general fund and some are the capital fund. But school side, we talked about this 1.5 million that we paid. Year mark two to three million for some other costs that'll be touched on, you know, along some of our sites. And then the paving, 747, I think it was actually 780,000 is the total cost. We're looking at some more paving review in that for summer 2025. The Lamson Lot, if you're over there, it's, it isn't in the best shape. Of course, Heaven has another lot similar to South Ridge, that, that longer one that was along the street. Of course, Seven Houses went along, I think it's 37th. Yeah, a little bit flaking off, so they'll be looking at that. The roofs, we've been doing, Kamaiakin's one of the worst schools. Some of the other ones that are slated for a bond, we would not, you know, get on, we wouldn't spend a million dollars on those. But Kamaiakin, the auxiliary gym, locker rooms, those buildings, based on some of the studies we've done, would be next in line. And that'd be estimating 500,000, hopefully not up to a million, but that would be a project that would be bid out in the spring and see what those prices look like. Some other items that were knocked out in this equipment was probably the results of having some other money coming in that we could free up money and do some one time stuff. So color copier, that was 130,000. That's going to allow color copies that we may made in schools to probably save a lot of money there. And we did get another tractor mower setup. You've probably seen the one that we got that really does a nice job. And we've been worried that that is our only one. If it goes down, we're pretty much out of luck. So now we got a couple. And that's just got put into operation, I think within the last two or three weeks as we had to wait to get the tractor and the mower. Some of the fencing, you know, Washington, you can see what that cost there, 37,000. E cap, we had some fencing there. Early learning was 37,000. Washington's 40,000. Got some fences, city sage, desert hills. If you go over by the track, there's a cage deal around that storage building. I don't know if you noticed, we were trying to see, see what that would cost and if that would help out some of the people lock up some stuff. And that was, you know, maybe 3,500 bucks, but you can see how that works out. Some playground, we talked about East Gate. We're looking at Amon Creek. They want a little spot for a gaga pit. If we pave it, they could eventually maybe get, get a playground structure there also later on. Some other items there, the boardroom audio. Is that what we got? Is that what we paid for, for 100,000? Really? And so I think it's more for the people calling in, right? So some of these projects, you know, I gotta say, you know, there's a lot of things out there that the guys get after. And Micah will know, there's really no favorites. Unless it's a priority, you gotta kind of wait. And I think we're getting to you.
Yeah.
So other stuff, athletic scoreboards, we have some, some that are hard to get parts for. La Pierre, Roy Johnson, South Ridge Football was on the list, but Roy Johnson's probably in need of it more. So there'll be probably a couple there we'll be looking at 35,000 each. Crosswalks, we'll be talking about a few projects there that are on the list. We're still looking at I T server room back here, needs a backup unit for cooling, irrigation, Lincoln, if you ever go by there in the summer, you'll, you'll see why, why this is a problem. And some extra painting, if you notice some of the cookie cutter schools, it's been about 10, probably 15 years since those were redone. They're getting some painting fading on those. So those would be looked at, get some pricing on that. And reader boards are a problem. They only last 10 years. They cost 40,000 each. We did seven in these years here, but we didn't do any in 2024, but the guys are saying we're losing panels and they're very expensive. So I'm sure you'll hear more about that. And rest, you know, there's always a lot of stuff. We got a bigger list and that's getting transferred to Tom and, you know, he's working on a better process. We're kind of getting all that together over the next, what do we got for the next five, six, seven years?
One thing that I brought up was a flag at Kamaiakin, their ball soccer field outside. They don't have a flag to pledge allegiance to outside.
Like, I mean, flag thing?
They do, they do not have a flag pole. So, so literally, somebody goes out there, stands on the field and holds a flag.
I think we were waiting on.
I'm sure, and thank you for reminding me. And I'm trying to remember if I brought that up at our capital projects meeting or not, but it, it's, and not like the main flag pole at the school, but it's like, like having somewhere to place the flag out of like.
So before every game, there's a, there's a national anthem or pledge allegiance, there's no flag. There's no flag. So second mic.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So a parent will walk out there on the field or a staff member will hold, just hold a flag.
But what about the flag pole? We were talking about the Native American and all that stuff.
Yeah, I don't think they're talking about that.
Okay.
This is.
We'll get it on, we'll get it going.
I, I know I have the email, so let me follow up on that.
Yeah.
Because what I wasn't sure about is what is like, was it, do we have a standard in place where there are those places to place flags at other schools? Is this just a one school thing or?
No, all the other schools have them.
Yeah.
They have it at Lamson.
Okay.
Every school has it, yeah. Kamaiakin's the only one that doesn't.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay. And it's by, it's on the.
Right on your.
On your soccer field?
It's the main field. It's, yeah.
Yeah, just right there.
Yeah.
It's like, it's like soccer track.
Not, but different from the football field.
Well, they, they practice football.
Well, they play at Lamson, but they practice.
Okay, okay, okay. Got it.
Yeah, it's a football, soccer.
Thank you.
And I did, yeah, I did hear that they were gonna put there, there was some talk about putting a, a American flag and then maybe a Native American flag or something. Whatever, but the American flags for sure.
Let's get it done.
Yeah, it would have, yeah, the, the plan on that, if you remember when we did the consultation with Yakima and the naming of, you know, retaining the name and of, of the map, of the Braves name and all of that, included a plan to have a place for the American flag, the Washington State flag and the tribal flag, the fly. And so we're still kind of.
When the American flag, the American flag should be there for sure.
Yeah, oh, yeah. And the other two, yeah.
And was that discussion just somewhere on campus or it wasn't specific?
No, it was out by the, it was to be, the plans were to be out by that field, right?
Yeah, you would be able to see it if you were doing.
There's a lot of places.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, we'll follow up on that.
Thanks Vic. Good evening, everyone. So fortunately or unfortunately, the guy who still has to use his Google Maps to get to about half the far besides is gonna be giving you an update on site development. So, but no, it's been a pleasure to be here, obviously for the last three months and, and obviously getting to work behind Vic and Eric has, has been great. And just really kind of learning some of the nuances and of the district and our needs. And, and I will say it's, it's compelling to me and, and I commend the board for, for decisions that have been made in the past because our facilities are top notch and it's something we need to be proud of. And obviously it's something we have to keep on our radar and make sure to maintain our assets for the betterment of our staff and our, and our students. And, and again, I commend these gentlemen for their, their past practice as well and our leadership. They've done a great job. So, so again, my, my, my part of this presentation is going to be primarily around just some of our, our, our big radar and also items that are in the process of some of our site developments across a lot of our campuses. This one in particular, this dates back a few years ago. It became an item, then it kind of, kind of fell off from, from the city of Kennewick's priority list. And so basically what, and this is kind of a consequence of development per se, it may be some solutions that didn't work primarily in the past with, when it came to retention ponds in this area. But in particular, this area around Ridge Line Drive, whenever we get hard rains, especially during the rainy season, collects, collects a lot of water, mainly in the lowest point of near the property, right around this area of Ridge Line Drive, which obviously can, is a, is a hazard and a concern for pedestrians and obviously drivers. So in order to be good, good neighbors and obviously for the greater community good, we did, we had a meeting with the city Kennewick engineer and looked at, is there a possibility where we could install some kind of infiltration pond somewhere in this region for the South Ridge campus on the kind of the southwest corner, where it's not going to potentially impact sporting items or possibly future plans of development or, or expansion. But where could we basically kind of both parties come together and find a solution? And what, what that solution is, is all to be determined. But most likely in, in conversation with that gentleman, it would be, it'd be a grass infiltration pond. So most likely, after it would be completed, you probably wouldn't even notice if it was there, other than probably it's just going to be a bigger swell. Most likely, again, the intent is just to catch more rainwater off of Ridge Line Drive. So any questions related to that?
I, I know that every really well. It's, it's weird. It's kind of like, I don't know, it seems like that already is a big dip, but I don't.
Yeah.
Does water really accumulate there?
It accumulates on the road. It does not go onto our property, according to the, to the engineer.
Never seen that. They have that big one across the street too, right? Yeah, I've never seen it on the road.
Yeah, there is one right in this region, right back there. And there's another one just to the west as well. So, yeah. Yeah, there is one right in this region, right back there. And there's another one just to the west as well. So, yeah. And again, to be determined on that. But again, we of course wanted to make sure that that was on the board's radar.
And I'm, I'm not a baseball player, but on this picture right here, the light colored, is that, how far out will a baseball go? There's not, it's not going to interfere with.
That's softball, softball field.
No, 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 no. Baseball is more, more north of this.
Oh, right, right. Okay, okay. But our ladies aren't going to be hitting a ball that far.
No. And of course, especially with Ryan, we'll make sure obviously we bring Southridge administration in the loop. Because we want to make sure obviously we're not touching ground. If they're planning for something that we're, that's not even on our radar. We obviously want to make sure we have good communication with those folks too. And again, something that you all are probably aware of anyways, but west of Westgate Elementary in Kawhi, there's a road and broom house right there with Conway Place. This is something that again was slated to begin here in March or April of this year, and we've already budgeted approximately about a thirty-nine thousand dollar commitment from the, from the district. And it's pretty much just a good old fashioned road upgrade. That's going to include sidewalks, lighting, signage, crosswalks. Obviously, that's not only going to serve the park, which is of course to the west of the campus, but also, also our students and our families as well as their, as they walk to school and cross that, cross that roadway. So.
Are they, are they doing a crosswalk all of that? Because I think the, the, the side of the road where the, the baseball fields are, that's just like, it's gravel, right?
Yes, yes.
Are they gonna do a crosswalk there?
Cars and the crosswalk and of course this, this design work, if you flipped it obviously the other way, probably make a little bit more sense. So the crosswalk is going to be approximately about right on the corner, the south corner of KDC.
Sorry, I said crosswalk. I meant sidewalk.
It's gonna, yes, it'll run. Yeah, yeah, parallel both sides. Yes, sir. Yeah, it'll be nice. Yeah. Right. Also Cottonwood Elementary, this is a, this is an area part of our community that of course is destined for future development. We know that. No big plans as of right now, but one of the issues that the, the school is dealing with is just good old fashioned car rider line issues mixed in with, with bus rider lines. And of course, just like any other campus, especially at an elementary level, we try to obviously separate those as much as we possibly can. That way we don't have kids close to, close to forty foot buses. So one of the ideas that we had was if, again, kind of depending on what other development around the campus may, may happen, is possibly integrating some kind of bus loop potentially on kind of the south end of the, of the campus to kind of circle back. Because really this property right here, we don't use it primarily for a lot right now anyways, and we could probably integrate some kind of roadway in there. That wouldn't hamper whether it's used for recess or soccer or whatever that may be. But again, would be a solution obviously for, for the building, for the short term and also for the long term. Again, that is, that is radar level right now. Again, no, no, no finite plans as of right now. Ridge Line Drive, this is, this is something that, that definitely will be taking place. Right now, we're thinking it's probably two to three years out from, from, from actually happening. And again, this is something that's probably been, been brought forward to the board anyways. But again, this region of course is more to the east of Desert Hills is destined for, is the next big development in, in the area, as we probably know. So in order to connect to that development, the developer owns the property just to the south of what is now Desert Hills. And Ridge Line Drive will be extended and tied into the development area to the east of Desert Hills. So when that, when that road goes in, this, there's quite a bit of undulation in that part of the, of the campus. And so consequently, in order to get that road to where it's not, you know, a, a, a certain degree level for, for cars to obviously go up and down, they're going to have to most likely build some kind of retainage wall on the south end of the campus to kind of compensate for, for that road. So that's where you see that hundred thousand dollar commitment, because again, that's something that's not necessarily part of the, the share. That's kind of a consequence to, to the road going in. But of course, that would be on, on us to make sure that we properly install something that's, that's going to be there for, for, for the long term. So as of right now, the shared cost estimates for both the district and the developer is two hundred fifty thousand. But again, with the potential of having to do some kind of retention of a, of a massive retaining wall in order to hold back, again, we're probably looking at additional hundred thousand dollar commitment for this.
Is that typical? That makes no sense to me that the developer is coming through and wants to put a road in and that we have to incur the cost of putting the retaining wall in?
I'm gonna go to the bullpen and make sure, because again, I've been in there three months.
And I'm sure that's how you're reporting it.
I will say, I, that is, that is absolutely very common. So yes, that's part of being in a developing community. Yeah, go ahead. Yes, sir.
Yeah, so certainly ideally it'd be great, you know, as development happens throughout the city, you know, adjacent to our properties, we didn't have to pay anything. Unfortunately, as we are kind of considered a developer of a type. This, this ridge line was actually supposed to go in kind of around the time that the school was built, but then it kind of got pushed to the right. So what we basically did is the city had us make a commitment to when that road does go in, we own half that road. The developer's paying for the other half. So, and that's just along, along our property line. So it's approximately five hundred feet. As to the, like the retaining wall, it could have gone two ways there. As Tom or Dr. Brilhart mentioned, the, the grades are kind of tricky there, right? So we, there were some assumptions made way back in, you know, two thousand fifteen era that it would be not very cost effective to fill that road to make it level. It'd be maybe make more sense to cut like further to the east and cut a road in. Well, with the development on this ridge line, they're actually flattening that out. So they're going to have a bunch of spoils. And then with that combined with the fact that it's, you know, they have a place to fill, they're gonna, you know, bring that over to fill it. They can meet their grades that way a lot easier than trying to cut through a lot of that basalt out there. So that's, that's kind of how that's, the evolution of that design happened. And yeah, it's, it's unfortunate, but you know, city, they have certain slopes they have to meet. And if it means us building a retaining wall, that's just kind of the, the way it goes. Any more questions on?
No.
No, it's, it's, it's a good question. And again, I can say where Mike came from, I mean, our biggest issue were sewers. Sewers was the biggest issue. And again, anytime that sewer line was extended, we had to take part of it because it serviced our buildings and our kids had to flush the toilets more properly. So, so it was just part of the commitment. So. Also with Ecap, so the campus that we're currently on right now, it's, it's kind of complicated. We have an administrative building, which is rather large. We have a very large elementary building and we have a preschool program that's all adjacent. And we're all kind of sharing the same parking lots slash low slash sidewalks. So what we are looking on doing is not only something simple in creating a, a safer, more efficient way for staff at Ecap to access the building by building them and access through this fence area and a sidewalk. That may, that may connect up here, may, may possibly connect over here. But also the complexity of Ecap, so through their, their preschool program, all students have to be checked in every morning in order for them to, to gain access to funding from the state. So that means that parents literally have to park their car and they have to walk in and physically sign students in. They can't just do a traditional car rider line like, like we're accustomed to at most elementary schools. So, so consequently, they do utilize this parking lot to the best of their availability. But unfortunately, they just don't have enough spots. It's just a numerical issue. So what we're looking at doing is some kind of solution to where, okay, how can we incorporate additional parking on this ground that doesn't impact obviously this swell over here near Amistad? But then also doesn't impact the playing fields that's already in place currently right here too. So, so again, design is to be determined. All of this funding will be through Ecap. This won't, this won't touch our budget. But right now, we're looking at potentially if we have design finished, maybe here in the next three months, we can put it out to bid within the next six weeks after that and have, have bids in and potentially have this be a summer twenty twenty-five project. And, and again, this is what the vision that Ecap's not going away. We're married to that property. We're married to that program. We want to make sure obviously that we instill something that's going to be for the long term. So.
We just connect.
I'm sorry.
Can you just connect, connect those two parking lots?
Potentially. That's another, that's another thing we actually discussed the other day was if we could do that, how could we make that happen? The complexity we have with it and, and it's, it's kind of a, it's an issue for about thirty to sixty minutes in the morning. Because again, everybody's coming in at once and ideally all, all parents and whatnot would, 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 would drop off on the north end of Amistad. But that's just not our reality. And, and so it's almost, it's almost like we need to separate the, the, the parking lots with, with intention. So it stays separated, not this kind of blending factor. But, but again, obviously we're, we're open to, that's why we hire architects to design these things, to think outside the box of ideas that we just don't have. So. Definitely to be determined. So I mean, we'll, we'll keep the board updated on this. So, because obviously this impacts this campus. So. Another thing we brought to the board's attention a few months ago, so as you know, the hydraulic piping issues at Southridge High School are slowly failing, not to the point where we expect them to burst this afternoon by no means. But, but eventually this is something we, we are definitely going to have to take care of. And of course, we take the proper steps to make sure that we did that first with obviously the emergency resolution that the board graciously passed that allows us to use emergency funding for, for that allocation. So basically what is happening is there's a shift in these very, very large pipes. And the, and the picture really doesn't do it justice. There is a lot of liquid flowing through those pipes very quickly. And so consequently, if you can kind of tell by that little picture, you can kind of see a lean to the, to the right a little bit. So that's the stress point that we're worried about, which of course if these fail, we lose all cooling and heating capability within the entire building. So the plan is to drain the system here in the next couple of weeks as soon as temperatures get below a sustainable level that we're not going to be hot in the building, whether that's sixty-five degrees or seventy degrees. We're going to drain the entire system and of course have a contractor come in and, and resolve the problem permanently. But, but again, we're kind of trying to find that sweet point where, okay, we can basically have a downed system for about two or three weeks and it's not going to impact the learning environment for our kids. Luckily, we do have heat strip, heat strips in all our HVAC system there. So if we do, we did need the heat to maybe ten to twenty degrees, we could do that. But obviously about outdoor air temperatures were down to the low thirties, that's just not going to compensate for that amount, that amount of square footage. So, so again, that's something that again, Ryan could probably give you more details than I can. But again, that's something that hopefully we'll get started. Again, we're just looking for that window. We've got, we've got, we've got a, a, a company ready to rock and roll. They've got supplies. We're just waiting for that, that sweet point to make sure, again, we don't impact the learning environment. Any questions on that? All right. Ryan?
Thank you. Nice job. Nailed your first one.
Thank you, Dr. Brilhart. Members of the board, Dr. Pierce, good evening. So I'll be taking it from here. So we're going to start with just major construction projects. Well, first of all, I guess, are there any questions on the hydronic since that was the kind of last thing that came up and probably might have some more details? Okay, outstanding.
Did we determine who was going to do that yet?
It's, it's in progress. We, we obviously feel that there's, there's a design aspect to this and we're going, you know, we've consulted with legal counsel and we're moving through that process. It's going to be a very slow process though. So don't expect anything in the near future. Surprisingly, people don't like paying for stuff, you know. So major destruction projects. So a little, little bit of review, a little bit of some new. So, you know, recent completed projects, of course Ridgeview Elementary, which is coming up on the year, then Tri-Tech Skill Center, Building C. And in design right now, we have Tri-Tech Skill Center, the core modernization. So just real quick, Ridgeview, Tri-Tech Building C, no successful projects. Ridgeview is coming up on the one year warranty period here in December. So we kind of start picking things up again, trying to sweep through the building, see what's, what issue, you know, communicate with the contractor. And it really kind of is nice because Christmas break provides an excellent opportunity to kind of get in there and for anything that may be more invasive without disrupting the school or classes. So that's, that's the plan moving forward and that'll carry us through the warranty period. And then we have it. It's ours. So Tri-Tech Skill Center Modernization, so currently in design, we actually just got the eighty percent construction drawings yesterday. So that's spurred a lot of activity. We're getting it through our shops. We're getting it over to IT. You know, making sure we're reviewing, starting to see if there's any red flags or anything that maybe somebody wants to have discussions about. We'll be going in for a constructability review beginning in November. And of course, that's when the, we hired an outside agency to base of engineers to basically look at the project, try to identify anything that they, they think maybe doesn't make sense or might cause problems or might result in like change orders, you know, drastic types of things. So, and that is of course, the, the whole goal is to avoid massive change orders during the construction project. And that's the process we found to actually be very helpful in, in avoiding that. So once again, so what you were seeing on the, on there before were just kind of some layouts of, of the various different program areas that we're reviewing. And of course, this is the schedule. So as you can see where the arrow is right now, we're about mid-October, early to mid-October. In the middle, CDs, constructability view, November. And this has a March bid date, getting out to bid. So that we're ready to go with plenty of time for summer. So we would start destruction after summer school for Tri-Tech. Any questions on Tri-Tech at all?
That doesn't move anybody, right? I mean, it's just building on.
It, so it's the ridge.
Or like using Cleveland again or?
Correct. We, we are going to have to find some spaces. We will be occupying the, the newer portions of the building. The, the area, the original nineteen eighty-one core area, about sixty-one thousand square feet is going to be isolated. And they'll continue instruction in those auxiliary areas. And then I know we've been in talks with some of the local colleges.
Like CBC.
CBC, you know, trying to find some space for some more, the more technical classes and then course group. They're gonna be spread out.
That's kind of a work in, in progress to figure out where those programs will be relocated temporarily. Yeah.
So originally, so we are trying to also condense construction, you know, to, to minimize that, that time outside there too. And actually moving a lot of those programs, because originally the plan was maybe a phased plan where we'd have to move certain people out at one time, work on a portion, and then we'd bring them back in and then we'd move to another area. Very problematic. If we're able to find a home for everybody, it's going to speed everything up. It's just going to be better for the project in general.
And we don't have any transportation responsibility to Tri-Tech, right? Everyone's responsible for you.
Each district transports their own students. So we have been talking at the advisory council, the superintendents of each district meet with Paul Randall on a regular basis and we're like the advisory council for Tri-Tech. So that's already starting to just talk through what some of the trans, like how that shuttles are going to work, timing, depending on, you know, where. It's going to be complex. Yeah, but we're, we'll have to figure it out.
Correct. And as Vic had mentioned earlier, this is a state grant funded project. So we're, we're seeing reimbursement immediately after expenditures, just as soon as we submit the paperwork. So. It's good there. Any questions about the major projects? All right, moving to future projects and funding. So we presented the tenure plan. This is just kind of revisiting that, you know, as we look to the future, what, what's next? And these are the, the facilities that we've identified as, you know, very highly likely for a next potential bond. As you can see, most of the structures there, they're over sixty years old. So pretty much make the most sense. One thing we did in this column, I'll point out to you, you'll see there's a column titled auxiliary spaces lacking. So even some of these facilities are actually in pretty decent shape, given their age. There's obviously some current concerns about things we can't see, underground infrastructure, things of that nature. But one of the most important things they're lacking are just some of the additional spaces that we've incorporated into modern construction. You know, for middle schools, that would be, you know, a second gym. Or, you know, for the elementaries, it'd be a multi-purpose room and a gym. So sometimes this is, not only the age is driving this, but it's also kind of what they're missing things that are maybe at other schools in the district. So in, so in an attempt to bring them kind of back up to what our modern day standard is, that also puts them on this list. So really kind of a no brainer as to who's, who makes this list. Any questions about?
Yeah. So why is it that Washington has a lower I, I cost score?
I cost score?
Yeah.
You know, I, I could, I could look, I could look back to it. It's just, if you recall the I cost, it's, it's almost like twenty-two sections with multiple sections. I'd have to look specifically at what was dragging down the score, but it could be anything from, you know, flooring to roof condition. HVAC condition could be it.
More I'm wondering, why does it have, why is it second in line rather than first in line? Because of state funding? Because of how?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yes, this is chronological to funding eligibility.
Okay.
Yeah. So this is just what's going to come available first.
Right. I forgot about that.
So, so the state match doesn't kick in until twenty-sixth for Highlands, twenty-seventh for Washington, right?
Correct.
And then so I don't know the history of bonds in Kennewick. Maybe I should. But like, is it, is it common to run like bonds for two schools or three schools or just all, is it one bond right here?
Potentially.
Well, so this would be a lot for one bond.
So you probably pick like, like three or two or three schools or how does it, how does the history?
So historically, we've always put quite a few on there, you know, almost five. I want to see five. Off the top of my head, if I had to come up with it, it'd be like five schools.
Like the, like the last bond had Kennewick High School.
Kamaiakin Edition.
Kamaiakin Edition, Southridge Edition.
Ridgeview.
Ridgeview Elementary eighteen, which we don't need. And am I missing anything from that? So like multiple projects. Do you want to add anything?
Vic can probably provide more historical context.
So on the, on the bond, when you issue a bond, you, you could do a bond, you know, for a couple hundred million dollars. You only have, there's certain rules on when you can spend all the money. You've got to spend it by like three or four years. So what a lot of districts do, they would do, and it depends on the tax rate and what you think voters can approve. If you wanted to do the whole thing, then you would only sell a certain amount of the bonds. The first, when you get the opportunity, maybe you'd sell a hundred million. Then two or three years later, then you'd sell the other hundred million, you know? So that's a, say a two hundred million dollar thing. Or you could say, well, we're going to do, you know, three of these and, and bring the tax rate down or however, and only do like a hundred twenty-five.
So that's how you do it if you want to include a building in thirty-one or thirty-two and you're just like, you're going to pass that window. So you just don't.
Yeah. And you'd have to, I think there's, I don't think there's a lot of limit on when you can sell your bonds, but those are different options.
Yeah, okay. I didn't know that.
But if you look at like the estimated project costs in that, like today's dollars, right?
Exactly.
And you add all of that column up and then knowing that you have to have sixty percent voter approval for that, that's, that would be a big lift to, to try to put all of those projects on one bond.
Yeah, it depends too. I mean, if you only sell half the bonds, that's the debt you're doing. So you don't pay the debt on the other one until you actually sell them. So that's a big process of, of kind of sorting that out with the financial advisor.
And I was going to mention, if you recall, I shared that we've been meeting, Tom and Vic and I have been meeting with the different bond advisors and financial people and about, about the bond refunding opportunity coming up. And so the study session in November, we've got people coming. And at that study session, we can talk not only about the bond refunding process and how that works, but some of the longer term financing, you know, plan with, with future bonds.
I mean, some of these are, I think it'd be tough to do a bond. You're going to have people say, well, where's my school? And you're, you're really looking at a. And you're really looking at a six or seven year span. So it's just, yeah, it's difficult.
Yeah. The other thing I just wanted to highlight and remind everybody, so as as Ryan shared, in the spring, when the board approved the updated capital facility plan, um, we talked about this a little bit and the process for engaging that executive facility committee to help with this prioritization. And and some of the challenge is, like, if you look at that funding eligibility, right? Horse Heaven Hills actually comes, their funding eligibility comes first, 2024. But when you look like all things considered in terms of when this school was originally built, amenities and IICOS score, that's where we're kind of, with the help of the committee, they took sort of all things considered. Where, what do we think would be first and next? Given all of these schools are a priority, but how how would you kind of priority rank all of the schools that are priority? And because of that, what could we potentially do at Horse Heaven Hills between now and when a bond is run to address some of the things that could could be addressed?
Doesn't that, sorry?
It does, right? There's then that influences the IICOS score. So that, but but there's potentially some things we've talked about, like cosmetic-y type things.
And we have, I think you've seen a chart that says what we've done for a lot of schools in the past six, seven, eight, nine years. We've done a lot. I think it's $7 million we've put into those schools. Yep.
Well, it'll be an interesting discussion too, because we're either gonna see these school costs rise like our M-SOC funding's been rising, or they're either gonna decrease like they were a few years ago. So hopefully we can have a lower bond and knock some of this stuff out.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, you're good.
And the legislature did, you know, um, the they, the square footage allocation, they increased a little bit the cost per square foot, but still nowhere near what it actually is, way behind stuff.
Uh, any further questions on the charter or anything you want me to go more depth on or? No, okay. So then, of course, we come to timing for as we move forward. So we have two levies coming in 2026. So obviously, it's about getting past that and then we can assess and and kind of go from there as to when we think the timing for a capital bond would be. So there's no further questions. That's it. Anything? Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Ryan. Thanks, Vic, Dr. Brillhart, Ryan, I appreciate it. Next up, K through 12 Student Goal Report, Student Safety, Mr. Matt Scott.
Okay, good evening. So we're coming tonight. Um, we do several reports over the course of the year. I might talk a little about that, but we're really focusing on our strategic goal around all students feeling safe, known and valued. Again, this report is really focused on giving you all information in regards to our strategic plan objectives in this area and kind of work that we're we're doing over the course of the year to hopefully influence the the survey results that we get in the spring. So again, looking at our safe, known and valued goal. Again, we do our student survey of our third through 12th graders in March, in April. In May, I come to you and kind of share the results of those surveys, along with our attendance data and discipline data. During the course of summer and early fall, we spent a lot of time looking at the information that we received and really kind to construct the 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 objectives and the things that we can do to impact those. And so that's really the focus of this report tonight, is to give you some ideas in regards to that. Particularly within our strategic plan objectives, I wanted to speak a little bit tonight just around some of the things we're doing to kind of strengthen our student behavior expectations through development of multi-tiered systems or system of supports. Wanting to really focus a little bit on our expanded safety officer program, but also how we're utilizing all of our safety resources and folks with that, as well as how we're providing training for principals to implement our comprehensive emergency management plan. So I want to spend a little bit of time with that. And of course, our key indicator is really tied into having our students feel that they are safe, known and valued at school. So these are the four topics I want to touch on briefly tonight, and we'll start with school improvement plans. So next meeting you'll have as part of the consent agenda, there'll be the school improvement plan board approval. So you'll have an opportunity to to look through our school improvement plans. One thing that we do every year is we do ask all of our schools to develop a goal around the students' feelings of safety and belonging. And this is just an example from South Ridge High School. We ask that the schools be data focused with their goal setting, that they identify some some key key plans, some actions that are tied to research to support their inclusion in the plan. And then really want them to take a look at how they've implemented these strategies, how they're how they're working them and and to see what the results are of those. Um, and so you'll see more of that when we bring the school the school improvement plans to you in October. But last year, we had 86% of our students were feeling safe, included and welcomed to school. Again, that's a an aggregate of of all these six questions. We kind of take a look, we feel that gives us a really good idea if a student is feeling safe in these areas and we want to have a goal of of more than 90% of our students feeling that way. We had a large number of schools that we reported on last year who had experienced increases and met goals for increase in the percentage of those those students who feel safe, known and valued. I wanted to highlight, though, a few of them, and and I could have highlighted every one of them, but we're trying to keep the board reports to 10 minutes. So I did want to talk a little bit about a couple of elementary schools, a middle school and high school, though. Amistad and Westgate. And as I talked with principals and said, hey, what what's really moving the needle for you in regards to your students feeling safe? There were some common themes that did emerge in terms of what's kind of working. So in Amistad, they really talked about their expectations. They do a couple of different things. They clearly communicate expectations and teach students expected behaviors and how they conduct themselves in all areas of the school, cafeteria, the playground, they they focus on those. Um, and they also talk a lot with them instructionally about what it what it feels like, what it looks like to to feel safe, known and valued, so that students have a good concept of that. Because sometimes that's a little bit challenging for elementary students. They're very data focused, according to Julio. You know, they've talked about their school climate data, not only the staff, but they talk to students about it. Um, and then he really highlighted, and again, Amistad's our first school that has a full-time safety officer. And we're gonna talk a little bit more about that program. That that presence of a safety officer last year and this year has really enhanced the feeling of safety amongst students. They they know that there's somebody there who is really kind of a superhero presence at Amistad. And he thought that was a a big part of it. At Westgate, in addition to being data focused and having clear expectations in terms of teaching kids what's expected, they also focused on how they're building connections in a sense of belonging with their students through their house system. So every student belongs to a house. They use those houses to to award good behavior, have healthy competitions between students, really encourage students to be great citizens and to represent their house as well. And those were really big focus points for them. At Chinook, we saw in terms of talking with Jake over there, student voice and choice being really key. So they've had within their their positive behavior intervention support system, their PBI system, weekly raffles, students who exhibit good behavior and good citizenship can enter into the raffle. But they they decided that really the students needed to have more say in that to develop more buy-in. And they've really seen an increase in the number of students who really want to want to earn the types of things that the students said were important, which tend to be some some snack items. Talkies are really important to them. And and then also they use the same thing to really develop an understanding of what students were wanting in terms of opportunities to connect to their school. And so they also had a theme of building connections where they listen to the students. Students said, hey, we really, we really want to have a movie making club. Can we have a movie making club? And so they, the staff said, yeah, I, you know, somebody said, I'd love to run that club. And so they're really responding to the student needs to do after-school programs that are not just focused on sports and to give students more opportunities to participate in their school and to be connected. And they also really wanted, they have an advisory period and they do a check-in survey with students where one of the questions that they answer is, do they need to talk to a trusted adult? Um, and so the students who indicate, yeah, I'd really like to talk to that person, get to identify the person that they see that way. And it enables the staff to connect, particularly when maybe the student's having a tough time. I mean, he also talked about their consistent expectations. All the schools talked about how they have to reboot that. It isn't just a beginning of the year thing. They they, after a three-day weekend, they'll they'll re, they'll take each of the each of the classes, each will take some aspect of the the expectations of the school and reteach those. At South Ridge, we saw the student voice and choice as well. John mentioned that the the student voice committee has really done a good job of helping them with their decision-making, better understanding the issues that are impacting students. So they asked them, where where are unsafe areas of the campus? Where are places that maybe we could enhance? And John said it was really simple. One of the things they talked about was the bathrooms, particularly, again, the boys bathrooms not having dividers between the urinals. And they said it was just a simple thing, it was a simple fix, but that the students said, you know, that really, it's not, it's not a, it's not a really welcoming place. It doesn't feel safe, it doesn't feel like a great place to go do your business. And so they took care of that. And that was directly from the students providing that input. They also had students indicating that they wanted more clubs and activities and have strived to provide those. And again, even at the high school level with our students who are, you know, 15, 16, 17, 18 years old, the need to revisit the expectations frequently throughout the year, particularly after breaks, was one thing that that John felt was really crucial there. So these are examples of the things that these principals were feeling really were moving the dial in terms of helping students feel safe and known and valued at school. The other aspect that we really have focused on within our objectives, and we've been working on the last year, has been in really helping our schools and our leaders envision how we develop an effective multi-tiered system of support, both academically and behaviorally. So this is just a graphic, there's lots and lots of information here. But we really want to 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 help our our schools develop the supports and systems that they need to at a tier-one level, what do all students get, both academically and behaviorally, to help them be successful at school? And then for students who need additional support, what kind of of resources are we able to put there, both at a tier-two and a tier-three level? Knowing that all students need to give, get access to good, solid core academics and and a good, solid foundation behaviorally. And so we're working with the district-level team. We have administrators from several of our buildings. We are gonna be working throughout the year with our building administrative teams, principals and assistant principals, to really delve into this and to help them understand not only what needs to be put in place, but how to lead, enhancing those systems within their schools. So when we talk within our strategic plan objectives around multi-tiered systems, system of support, that's what we're really talking about. I shared a little bit last year about just the variety of interventions that we have. And again, we we have lots that are classroom-based, but we have also some, I mean, students, when they're not being successful within the classroom, when they're being disruptive, there's other interventions that we want to be implementing. Our goal always is to help students learn from and develop better behaviors and to be and to and to not repeat those behaviors. Um, and so we have a variety of interventions, some of them, again, classroom-based, where the teachers are working on it and then where we have other folks. And we're gonna talk a little bit about some of those folks that are working on that towards the end. But these all fall within lines of our having multi-tiered systems. Some students require a little, some students require more, and we just want to have great systems that speak to that for our students. So I talked last year a little bit about our comprehensive emergency management plan. We're in the process of of doing a lot of work around it to to revise and just bring, you know, back up to par, you know, our emergency management plan, making sure that we have consistency in our language and our terminology, clarifying the roles and responsibilities when it comes to dealing with a a an incident where we need to have some sort of emergency response, and then also strengthening just the quality of that of that with our, within our system. So we're in a process of implementing that now, training, particularly our building principals, and and how we're providing that support to our staff. We are taking, we always take a look every time we have an incident, whether it be a bus accident, whether it be a a a school, a school safety incident, to just determine, did our preparedness help us? Did our planning help us to manage that? Were we successful? So a debrief and audit process is all part of that. And then we're meeting with our district partners, which is really our law enforcement and fire department. And it's really important for us to, and we're gonna talk a little bit more about some things we're doing with them, because sometimes folks don't understand that within our community, we, our our boundaries cross over with other jurisdictions. And so we have Ammon Creek Elementary, for example, that is within the Richland municipal boundary, but it's within our school district. And so and Cottonwood's another one that is in the county. The great thing about our partnership with our with with law enforcement and fire is that there is great coordination amongst all of them. So, you know, we we make sure that those folks are at the table. I'm gonna talk a little bit about a process with that. But we we want to be working with Richland Police and Kennewick Police, but we don't want to ever be in a situation where something happens at Cottonwood or Ammon Creek and we say, well, that's, who's who's responding to that? It's, everybody responds. KPD responds, everybody's coming to that. If, once we're responding, if there was, you know, a pretty significant event, for example, at Ammon Creek, Richland would be the agency that is taking the lead, but we have multiple agencies. And a great example of that was an incident that happened a couple of years ago at South Ridge High School where there was a swatting issue and the school was in lockdown for some time. We had Pasco Police, we had Richland Police, we had Kennewick Police, we had Highway Patrol. We we had tons of people who were responding, and that's really how we work with that. But it's important to have good partnerships and to have a process. And I'll talk a little bit about our process for making sure that we're all on the same page with that. Primarily within our comprehensive emergency management plan, it's a lengthy document, but we really are focusing on three areas. One is on our school safety plans. We developed a more consistent, uniform template. Our plans were, had always been developed. Just because we were working on this last year didn't mean that we didn't have, um, plans. All the schools had plans, but it just depended on, I mean, you'd have to look certain areas for some things and we just wanted it to be a much more uniform. And so it is. We also want them to be providing one-page guidance to the variety of people who come into the building. They're probably not there yet because this takes some time to do. But my my visioning and what we would want is as a visitor comes into the school, they're provided a one-page. If you're visiting the school and we go into a secure and teach, what do I do as a visitor? So we're working towards that, but those one-pagers are really important because there, everybody has a response, everybody has something they need to do if we go into an emergency situation. Um, and we really want that consistency in our in our verbiage. Our emergency responses, we've talked within our plan about our incident command structure, who who's who is in charge of what and who's communicating with who. Again, we're striving for consistent language and shared understanding primarily around four responses. Secure and teach, lockdown, evacuate and shelter in place. The the secure and teach, I'll just touch on it really briefly. In the past, it's been a critical or non-critical lockdown. And we very quickly kind of, as we started in this process, felt like that can be confusing. Number one, we want a lockdown, if there's a lockdown call, to have a specific response, which which is there is immediate danger in this building and we need to protect ourselves. We need to protect our children. We need to, we need to implement procedures to do that. We don't want there to ever be a question, is this a critical lockdown or a non-critical lockdown? What do we do? So we want there to only be one lockdown. Secure and teach is different. Secure and teach allows us to have some flexibility within that. We have a variety of reasons why we might do move to secure and teach. One of the most common ones is we have police activity in the neighborhood and the police contact us and say, we really need to have Chinook Middle School stay, keep their students inside. We've got something going on. We don't want students out in the playground because there could be something that happens. So we just need, but we don't need you to lock down, we just need you to stay in the building. And it gives us the flexibility. It gives us flexibility to decide, are we gonna let parents come in and continue to check their children out for dental appointments? Or do we put a sign up and say, we're we're the building's secure? So that's a lot of fluidity with the secure and teach. But we've worked with law enforcement in particular on that and and the different jurisdictions to let them know that that's really our vernacular and it really does communicate a certain thing. And so it's been really effective so far. And I'll talk a little bit more about that when I talk about Scott's role. And then we really want to focus on our communication structures, both within the district, simplifying communication. It was not in common under kind of our old plan for a building principal to not only have to be worrying about what's going on with their students and their staff, but also have to be thinking about, oh, do I need to contact food service about lunch? And do I need to contact transportation about the busing? And and, oh, I better call my boss and let him know what's going on. And I know Robin has to communicate, so we don't want our principals to have to deal with that. We want our principals to have to deal with one person, and that is their supervisor, who can help get them the the help they need. So we're really simplifying those communication lines. We also want to make sure that we're communicating with our stakeholders. And so when you go on to this, the website, and when the public goes on and they can look under our school safety tab within the website, they'll see, you know, these are our emergency responses, this is what you. our emergency responses, this is what you can expect from us in terms of communication. This year, we've implemented emergency alerts and safety updates. Safety updates are just letting people know, particularly if there's some rumored activities or some things that are going on in our schools, here's an update on what we're doing. An emergency alert would be if we were having an event at a school. We'd be setting on an emergency alert, this is what's going on. And so we really wanted to delineate those two for folks that they understood. You know, again, a safety update is informational. An emergency alert may be that there's, there's something that you need to pay attention to in terms of, like, how you would reunify with your child or something like that. So those are really the thing, the, the main points around our comprehensive emergency management plan. But I wanted to talk a little bit, lastly, about our school safety and security personnel. So I did ask Scott Child to be here tonight and to serve kind of dual roles. I did, he came on board as our school safety and security coordinator last year, but he's also part of our safety officers. And I think it was really crucial as we got that program off the ground, to have Scott be for one year, boots on the ground, working as that person, because he is really the key person who is in charge of making sure that that program is running, that we select great people for it, that we give them the training they need. And so he really does that work, but he also does some other things for us. I talked about the communication piece being really important. Scott, being a former KPD commander, having years of experience working with KPD, has been instrumental in forging an even tighter partnership with them, particularly around our communication. So all of our safety officers and our SROs are equipped with police radios. It cuts down on response time, it helps us know what's going on. Scott's always fond of saying, we have their air and, and, and we speak their language. And it has just been a valuable resource to us as we've figured out what's going on, what do we need to do to have really quick response time for that. He also facilitates meetings with those community partners. So we just had one where we had Richland Police, Kennewick Police, the Kennewick Fire there, so we could just talk a little bit about our safety plans. What, you know, making sure that we have things in place that are in line and congruent with how they would respond, making sure that we are all understanding of everybody's roles and responsibilities and, and helping us through that. One of those things that Scott has, has rekindled, we did it pre-COVID, is school walkthroughs. And so we have, he basically, the, the idea behind it is that we take the, our, our, our police, our police personnel who would be out on patrol and would be responding during school hours to, to an event at a school, and we get them into the school so they can see the layouts, they can see and understand what they would experience when they came into the school, they can see the different points of egress, they can see where our amber lights are on the exteriors of the buildings, they can test their key card to make sure that they, because all of our police department folks have key cards to get into our buildings in cases of emergency. And so we had the first one over at Amistad, and we had a pretty sizable group of, you know, about 10 to 15 people there that, that walked through and kind of got a great orientation to that. And we're going to be going to other buildings. We won't hit every building every year, but on a rotational basis, over the course of two or three years, we'll get into every one of the buildings so that our first responders know what Amistad looks like when they get in there. And so I think really important there. Again, we, he also operates as a liaison with our school resource program, so we did add SROs at our, at middle schools last year. We've got eight of those folks working with us, and so Scott, at one point in his career, I think supervised those folks. So he's really aware that the SRO program can help us make sure it's a, it's a great add to our schools. And then he's also working to help the schools with safety plans, and we've just, with our school security officers, which are our non-armed folks at middle schools and high schools that really assist with student supervision, investigations and those kind of things, he's rebooting a little bit, they're onboarding, and how we can provide them with some consistent training across the board. So I just can't stress the value add that Scott has been for our district and, and just the, the work he's done. I also, so I, I've talked about all these folks, but I just want to give you an idea of how many of these folks we have right now. We have nine school safety officers, we have number 10 coming on board with us in November. And now with every additional school safety officer we add, two schools now have a full time, because we just take the pairing and we split it up. And so we're, we're excited about that and, and continuing to work with, with folks on that. And again, feel that we've got great security and safety folks in our schools. We also, though, have lots of folks who are not armed and not necessarily trained within law enforcement, who are there to help with providing for safety and security for our, our students and our staff. So again, just running down our school counselors, our numbers of school counselors, our migrant counselors, our student assistance program staff through the, through the educational service district, our school psychologists, our school nurses, our classified staff, these are all of our employees that we have who are dedicated to keeping our 19,000 students safe every day. And I just applaud all their efforts because they all do a great job of it. So, that, are there any questions or comments?
You anticipated, you anticipated one of the questions I had coming in, which was specifically about Amen Creek and Cottonwood, of not being in Kennewick's city limits, because I was so impressed with Kennewick Police Department when I had the chance to attend the active shooter training. I couldn't go this fall, I went a year ago, but was really impressed that, like you've mentioned, every single KPD officer has a badge and can immediately get into one of our schools. But if we are recognizing that those two schools are under the jurisdiction of other police departments or law enforcement agencies, are we extending that same access to those agencies? Or, I mean, it sounds like you've been getting together and they have some sort of a partnership. I'm very comfortable with KPD showing up at one of our schools and taking over. I guess I just want some reassurance that the county and Richland are doing the same.
Yeah, so Richland does. I mean, we made sure that they also had the same access. The county's been a little bit harder, and we're working on the, making sure we get those folks with us on, on that. But again, I think what's really crucial is the fact that, that KPD is responding. So for example, we did have an issue at Amen Creek last year where there was an individual out, not in the building, but out in the neighborhood that was suspicious, and, and KPD was first on the scene. They were there. And so again, it, we, we're enhancing those and we're making sure, and again, we, we have our, our, our meetings, not necessarily school walkthroughs, but just our meetings with those folks, making sure that they have what they need and that they have the access that they need to be able to respond. Absolutely.
And then just in consideration of our, the community's unfortunate experience last spring at Wiley, you know, I know that the schools do drills all the time for lockdowns, but are we incorporating now drills for if something happens when everyone's out at recess or at drop-off or pickup? Are we actually practicing with the students what to do in those situations?
Yes. So unfortunately, but fortunately, I mean, it, it, we haven't, we haven't had necessarily a situation like that, which is very fortunate, but it did seem last year, and I kind of joked with Scott, like, why are these, all these things happening right at the end of the day? Or why are these things happening just as we're releasing kids to lunch? So we have some actual times when we had to implement that, but yes, as far as their drills, we do ask for, for our folks to make sure that they are considering all of those things. So for example, at our, at our middle schools and high schools that have after-school events, part of their planning is, what do we do if something happens after school? We're either practice or we're at a game. Lamson has a plan, or if there were to be some event that happens during a football game at Lamson. So we do take into consideration, not just the, the controlled times, the, the times when we have people in classrooms, but that we have, we have, I mean, opportunities to think about what happens when students are there. We have playground evacuation plans, all of those things are, are put into place, and so we are.
So I appreciate that there's plans, but I'm curious to know if the students and teachers are having a chance to practice them.
Yes, they, they do, they do. And we have them, all the schools, we log their drills every month. Now, they're required to have a set of drills, but it's a minimum requirement, but we're also, one of Scott's duties is to help us audit the drills to make sure that folks are providing their folks with an opportunity to practice those things. So we do, I mean, want them to run drills during lunchtime, for example, or, you know, practice those things when they would maybe need to bring kids in from the bus. There are some practical applica, or practical considerations, you know, I mean, you get kids on the bus and get them home, so we can't necessarily do some, but again, sometimes those are even in the form of a tabletop drill with their, with their responding staff, like, what would we do if, on types of activities?
And then just out of curiosity, what on earth do we do if a school needs to be evacuated in the middle of the day and our bus drivers are outliving their lives? You know, that's, you have to wait for bus drivers to come and get to the, I mean, I'm assuming there's a plan for that too, but I'm just curious to know what it is.
Yeah, so, I mean, there is as far as-
If it's safe to relay those things-
Yeah.
Because we might not need to say that out loud.
Yeah, no, well, I, what, what, what does happen is that our transportation department has, has plans in place. I mean, so, so drivers know that they could be called, called back to work. It would, there would be a, there would be some time that would take people to get and mobilize, but typically, again, when we're thinking about that, just in terms of evacuation, you know, students are out of the building and they're, and they're safe, they're just awaiting transport someplace else. It's not ever that we would be counting on the buses to, for lack of a better word, like, take students from a dangerous situation away from a dangerous situation. That thing has probably already happened, to be honest, and so now, so that's a consideration as, as far as that goes too. I don't know if that makes sense or not, but it's, I mean, there is a plan to bring, drive and get people, and help people help to move kids if we needed to move them. But again, not necessarily the same response time that we would need for first responders. We'd, we'd have some time to get people there.
Sure. I, I was just reflecting back to Wiley, and I knew that there was a neighborhood church that offered up their space for the, so the families could come and find their kids. So I was just curious to know if we've been proactive and identified locations where we can move kiddos if we need them away from the school and-
A lot of times it's fairly fluid. It kind of depends on the circumstance, but that's part, part of what the school planning is, to make sure that there's a couple of different areas to, to stage kids to be evacuated to. But as far as like the where they go is really largely, in many ways, determined by what's happening with the police department and their unified command. Where, where, what, where makes the best sense as we close off streets to have parents meet their students? And so it really depends on the situation, and it's, it's very fluid. But that's why the communication is so crucial, so that we can get that information out to families in a timely manner so that they know where, where they need to go, where is the reunification site, for example.
Sure. Great. And the last question, what do we need to do to get a school safety officer at each of the elementary schools? I know that the board talked in advance of Josh and I joining, of they approved a higher rate of pay, just hoping that that would address some of that. So what, what more, what more do we need to do?
So, so one of the, one of the, one of the challenges, I'll be just real honest, is the level of training and the requirements we have for the position. So we require our, our safety officers to have been, to have been certified law enforcement personnel. So that narrows your pool. We've got lots of people who apply. Just having a, a military police background doesn't do it for you. Just having been a secure, an armed security, you know, for a, for a bank doesn't do it, because we really value the training that goes into being a police officer, law enforcement person, just in terms of how you work with people and the skillset you have there. So to some degree, we're, we're, we're only limited by the number of people who are available, who, but I will say this, and Scott has been a great ambassador for the program, as we've hired more and more folks who are coming up, because police officers can retire fairly early, that we've had lots of people contacting all of our safety officers, people that they've known, and there's been a really favorable response to, yeah, this, this would be something for me. So it seems as though every time we have some police officers who are retiring, Scott's on top of it, he's reaching out, they're reaching out to him. And so we are, we're very confident that over the course of this year, that we can, that we can get, I mean, our goal is to have everybody a full-time by the beginning of the next school year.
That's actually one of our objectives, right, is to have everybody hired by the end of the year. So there's, there's really nothing else, like, the board needs to, to do? We have that work in progress, and our hope and goal and efforts are to make that happen.
Well, I mean, it's, I mean, it's only the second year of the program, and it's already incredible, so it's-
Yeah, the question, the question would be like, is it, is it safer to have one all-star guy on two or three schools, or just to have someone temporarily at a school while we're waiting to grab, you know, to get that, that'd be the question. But if you really feel confident that they'll be all filled this year, then-
And I would strongly advocate and not, I would not at all advocate and would be strongly against us lowering our standard for, for hiring. And I'm not saying you're suggesting that, I just am like, yeah, no.
Unlike short-term, would it be safer to have someone that's not quite as qualified?
Yeah, so, so right-
I, I would say no.
Yeah, I think, I think this, this whole program comes down to hiring the right people. And I think to Matt's point, yeah, I mean, we could get the applicants, we could hire people, but we want people like Scott and the retired police officers. And I think ultimately, a big part of this, right, is their ability to relate to the students and create a positive relationship for, for our students. So they have, you know, this positive picture of, of, you know, essentially, police officers or law enforcement, so, but yeah, I'm, I mean, I'm just excited, as excited to get it filled this-
Yeah, and I understand I'm not asking us to lower our standards. What I'm saying, that there's a question of one person covering two schools, right? Or having someone in each school, even though that person temporarily, short-term, is not as qualified.
So you're saying like not, like not have, like some schools wouldn't have anybody?
Like right now, you have officers covering multiple elementary schools, right?
Yeah, two.
So we're, yeah, right now, we have one officer, every, every school-
Which means there's always, there's then that, I mean, there's always a school that doesn't have an officer, right? And I know that the guy's jumping back and forth and stuff, but it's like a couple days or a day, you know? But I'm saying, my question is, is that, is it safer to have someone just short-term, while we're still looking for that great person, short-term in that, in that other spot, just so there's a physical body there?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think that's what we've, we've really done with the deployment, is to do it in that way. And so again, you know, and, and Scott, having done the job, Scott jumps in. So there've been times when, you know, somebody's been absent, and so he's jumped into that role.
If Scott believes, if Scott believes the way is to have one, but one person and one person for two buildings, then I, I trust him.
And the benefit is too, if you think about it, that it's getting everybody acclimated to the, to the program.
Yeah.
And so there's really good, strong support and positivity. Every school I go to, they speak so highly of their safety officer.
No question.
They love having the person there, so, and I think that they would see it as why, like, and we are, like, why don't I get one? Even if for, for right now, it's a halftime person.
Yeah.
I, I just have a real quick, is there any way that you, that you could put together, Dr. Pierce, maybe with Scott, just a couple examples, four or five examples of the program, like a real example of it working? I've talked to some people in the community, and they're like, we love the program, they're great, but like, has there been, like, is there any examples of how they've impacted the school or whatever, right? And I, I know, I think one example, there was someone with a machete walking down a street at one point, and the officer like got out front really quick, and like, that's a great example, but like, do you have any more of those that we can just share with the community if we're asked, like, hey?
Absolutely. We will, I will get that, we'll coordinate and we'll get that-
That might be like a good video for our social media. Robin, good project for Robin, she's looking for something now.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Perfect. Thank you, Matt. All right, we have no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business, which is, we'll be discussing WADA legislative priorities and, I don't, do we have a slide?
Well, I did, I, I have it on-
Do you?
To bring up the spreadsheet, if you would like me to do that.
Sure, yeah, I was going to ask you, and then I didn't. Didn't change anything.
So, so as Brittany shared earlier today in her report, we were tasked with picking our legislative priorities for the school district and submitting those. They had to be submitted by midnight last night. So similar to the WADA model that we did, all the board members were given a spreadsheet, and they were able to go in. There's like 150 of these priorities, so the board members would go through, do the research, and pick which ones, they rated one through 10, and then take it over.
Yeah, and just, I didn't add Micah's. I got Micah's a couple of days ago, and I did it.
For some reason, I couldn't open, wouldn't-
There was some technical problems, and I couldn't add it, so-
There was a no-share, so I just emailed them to her, and she-
Yeah, so Micah did submit the information. So I think Gabe's pretty much covered it. All we did at that point was just go through and tally, because what we need to submit to WADA, it doesn't matter what the priority is, they just want to know what the top 10 are. are. And so we didn't concern ourselves a ton with looking at what our actual highest priorities were, although it's pretty clear that full funding of basic education was everyone's number one pick. So then we just took those priorities that had the most number of people voting for them. And the highlighted ones are what we submitted to WASDA. And so you can see that with the exception of, where is it? Actually, they all have a funding element to them. The one that might not clearly look like a funding issue is the Public Records Act and legal notice requirements. School districts across the state and the nation right now are really waylaid by public records acts. There are, there's really no better way to explain it. So this is something that the public may not be aware of, but there are predatory individuals out there that request years' worth of information from public entities. And it requires a massive amount of manpower to comply with those public records requests. And because of that, we are in the process of changing some of our staffing and needing to fill that need with some of our attorneys and some staffing just to make sure that we are appropriately addressing those public records requests. And so this particular piece of legislation is urging the state legislature to look at some of those predatory practices and being able to put some things in place that say, telling public entities, hey, if a if a request meets these particular points, we're going to consider it predatory, and you don't need to comply with that. So that would be something that would be very, very helpful to not only our district, but, I mean, almost every school district across the country would really benefit from some standards like this put in place, so that we don't have to, because these individuals get money. Anyway, there's, yeah. So that's the only one that doesn't look like it's strictly about the state giving funding to the school districts. The rest of these are all entirely about funding. So there's a specific one that you want me to speak to?
Nope. Nope. I think we just wanted to throw it up so people could see what we we worked through and selected. I think the one thing we probably need to find out going forward is full funding of basic ed, then we have MSOC funding, then we have special funding, then we have gifted fund, like.
I know.
Why doesn't full funding just cover funding for all? Like, why is it broken out? So I think this is something we'll to look at down the road.
And yeah, and I think, I think, I don't know that I have a clear answer for that, but I think it just might be, I don't know, I can't imagine there's not a district out there that doesn't want full funding, but.
Well, not to be cynical here, but this isn't new. This is the same thing we want every year. Nothing's changed. Why do we think something will change?
Squeaky wheel.
Right, right, squeaky.
I mean, there is, there is growing discontent.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, yeah, but that's just my point. I I my frustration is, is the legislation seems to do whatever they want to do. And I mean, like we talked about with lobbyists and and all those things, I, yeah. We have our list of priorities. And you know, I looked at this list of 150 different things we could talk about, and, yeah.
Yeah, I know.
I'm not sure that, I'm not sure it makes any difference in terms of really moving the dial. It had, if we look, we haven't. So past trend, best predicted future performance.
Yeah, I would even say probably 80, 80% of them every year from WASDA are roughly the same. Occasionally, like, maybe the public records one sneaks in this year, but for the most part, yeah, it's all, it's all funding. But ultimately, I think we just wanted, we didn't have a chance to talk about it before.
Yeah, we just want to be transparent to the public that this was the process we went through, that we told our state association that we want them to work for, work toward for us. So.
Yeah, go ahead.
The the other thing that I just wanted to provide, so you have some time to think about it in light of of this, is the last year's board's legislative priorities. And this is a document that we update every year, and we use it along with some talking points and data for when we meet with our legislators prior to session. And so this is on the agenda to update in November. So there's an opportunity for the board to review it, think about these priorities, and provide me with how you want this to get updated. So we can update it and pass it, the board can formally adopt it at that November meeting. And then the other thing I just wanted to share was that document I referenced earlier, which, this is essentially the WASDA legislative priorities, and the, it's organized into immediate priorities and ongoing priorities, as I said. So there's lots of overlap. And but you can just take a look at this. And because I think the WASDA legislative platform gets adopted after the November meeting, because doesn't it get finalized at the WASDA conference?
Sounds right.
Yeah.
I think so. I don't know exactly. But anyway, it's like the timing doesn't totally line up. But we'll just want to get this updated for this year. So give it some thought and let me know what you want to do.
Any questions, concerns? All right, moving on. Next meeting agenda, we have our enrollment update, we have the Reading Foundation, Highly Capable Program, as well as Career and College Readiness, CTE, Career and Technical Education, anything for end of October? Alrighty, moving on. We have no other businesses authorized by law, so I will go ahead and close the meeting before 7:30.